Bye, Mrs. Holmes. All in favor? So ordered. If everyone could please rise and pledge allegiance and remain standing for a quick moment of silence. Mr. Groden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, as Board of Education, we'd like to have a moment of silence for a former employee of ours who passed away. Our condolences go out to Rosemary Strang's family and friends and family, and we are sorry for her loss. We can have a moment of silence in remembrance. Thank you, everybody, so much. Everybody can please silence your electronic devices. Um, it was not to disturb the meeting. We greatly appreciate it. It seems like we have a lot of students here. If you're here for your government class, uh, one line on that piece of paper is who's running the meeting. My name's Timothy Crumley, the president of the Board of Education. That line is me. At the end of the meeting, any of the board members up here can sign your piece of paper, and that will be acceptable. So at the end of the meeting, just come up to any one of us, uh, members of the board, and we can sign that for you, and you should be all squared away and good to go. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? Favor? So ordered. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Uh, motion to adjop the agenda made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Um, motion to approve minutes, February 16th, 2023, made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. You did make it. Mr. Feldman. Student board member update.
So on February 14th, the Red Cross Club helped host a blood drive where 24 people were able to donate blood, and that ended up helping seven families. All county is this weekend and has been postponed to have everything on Sunday, March 5th. Tomorrow is the end of the incomes for the third marking period. University and varsity winter sport awards will be on March 9th. And speaking of winter sports, we've had a lot of accomplishments made with both boys' and girls' basketball, making it intersectional. The senior Tanja DeJesus placed second in the 55-meter hurdle at indoor state qualifiers and is heading to the New York State Championship. Uh, the junior Caitlin Moore placed and qualified for the New York State Championship. And the sophomore, Alexa Heinz, placed first in the 2023 Girls' Song New York State Championship. And then the last thing is the superintendent's new roundtable coming up on March 16th.
All right, very much, Mrs. Mr. Feldman. Um, we have a presentation tonight of building principles, athletics, and PE. I'll hand it over to Dr. Evans. Unfortunately, Lisa is not with us this evening. She fell ill halfway through the day, so Dr. Evans is going to fill in stupendously.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. I will do my level best. How's that? Uh, so tonight, we have a number of schools and our athletics and physical education department who will be presenting their proposed budgets for the 23-24 school year. So again, this is a budget presentation meeting. By law, the Board of Education ultimately makes the final decision of any budget that will be presented to the public for voter approval in May. Uh, the Board does welcome public feedback about, uh, the budget. Uh, and in order to do so, members of the public can certainly email the Board or make public comments, uh, later in the, uh, meeting or any board meeting. Uh, the goal is to be as transparent as possible in our budgeting. Uh, this is a public budget that the voters of the district will ultimately decide upon, and every voice will be heard and respected. Uh, we need to really do our best to balance the needs of the entire district, uh, given that we are a public school system. So, uh, to begin, I'm gonna ask Mr. Wilder, uh, the high school principal, to present, uh, his services, supplies, materials, uh, that he's proposing for the 23-24 school year. Mr. Wilder.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, so for the high school, when you look at the totality of the budget, we're looking to increase the budget by just under $7,000 in total. Uh, when you look through the budget, you see a lot of reductions in a lot of the budget lines, uh, where you see increases, um, specifically, some of the larger increases are seen in purchase services. And this is not due to an increase in expenditures. It's just a realignment of where those expenditures are coming from. So in the past, um, some of the funds that came for, um, paying for the, uh, resources we use in the community, such as literacy volunteers, uh, used to come out of a district, uh, budget code. That's being shifted to the building budget code so we can keep more, uh, careful track of how much, uh, we're spending in those areas and because, uh, there that money is being used for students in the high school. Um, so that's why you see that increase, uh, there. Uh, there's additional increases for the maintenance contracts in science. Uh, now that we are back in our spaces, and I know that many of you have toured the spaces, uh, we need to make sure that our equipment is being serviced appropriately and, um, is effective for instruction. Go to the next slide. Uh, additional increases are in the math supply line, where we're gonna be replacing graphing calculators, and we know that those can get very expensive. Uh, in the past, we used to have it taken out of the, uh, new, uh, equipment instructional code, uh, within the building budget, and that's just being, uh, switched down to the specific math supply line, again, to more closely align where the expenditures are going and for what purpose. And so you would see a corresponding reduction in that line, uh, further up. And then there's a, uh, a large increase in expenditures planned for the library. Um, that's actually in the next slide as well. Uh, so for the construction project, renovation project, we turned the library into classrooms, um, so that we could, uh, be sure to have our, um, vast amount of, of course offerings available to our students. Now that we have the renovation areas back available to our students and teachers, we have been taking down the walls in the library. And prior to the construction project, renovation project, uh, the library was a really important hub of student activity, both during the school day and after school, um, where a lot of student activities were held. We're looking to build that back better. Um, the space, the way it was utilized prior to the renovation project also included, um, computer labs, because we were not a one-to-one device building at that time. Now that we are, we don't need those computer labs up there. So the way that it was configured and the types of furniture, um, just doesn't make sense anymore. So we're really looking to, um, like I said, build back better, make it a space that, um, will be meeting the needs of students for years to come, and so we're looking to freshen up that space. And then from there, just, uh, some minor tweaks in relation to some of the clubs' activities and, um, that's really the crux of it. We're really looking forward to continuing the, um, the trajectory that we've been on with improving the experience of our students and schools. The school board has invested for many years since I've been here in the classroom spaces, and we're looking to continue that. So, um, some of the general fund budget for the, uh, building is going to go to continuing to improve those educational spaces through, uh, replacing old furniture, um, and making sure that we have environments that are, uh, that students can be excited about.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wilder on the high school budget?
Uh, so I noticed that the, um, field trip budgets have been changing. Some's going up, some is going down. It looks like overall, though, it's definitely, uh, a reduction. Um, I mean, is, is there other less field trips happening? Is it, is that a good thing?
So, um, yes, it, it depends on how you look at it. Uh, we still have field trips going out, and there are still plenty of, uh, trips that are happening through, um, our clubs and activities. Uh, but they're generally not happening as much through the, um, through the constant area during the school day.
Is that intentional? I mean, is that, I guess, I'm wondering if that's a, is that bad, right? Because, so convince me it's not bad.
Yeah, I don't think it's bad. Really, the more time you have on task, and we're still creating opportunities for students to travel. Um, you know, the clubs and activities that we have are expanding. Um, I just talked with a club advisor today that's gonna be taking a trip, um, to New York City with, with a group of students. Uh, it, it's, there's still a lot of opportunities that are available that we've invested in, and more opportunities for trips have been opening up. They're just in different places.
So I just, I, sorry to, sorry to, like, die on the spear here, but, um, so for students, what percent of the students are on the ineligible list, roughly?
Roughly?
Yeah, 10, 40, you know?
Probably about 30, between 33 and 36%.
Okay, so 30 odd percent, right? So, but, so if you're on the ineligible list, you're not gonna be involved in those, right? You're not eligible to be, to have access to those field trips. So are they, I mean, is a third of the population just, you know what I mean? Are we, are we using these, are we, are the, are our opportunities for field trips at all? That's my question.
Sure, I think that's a good question. Um, students can still participate in clubs and activities, and that there's different students that are participating in the clubs and activities at different times. Um, and it doesn't always correlate to who's on the ineligible list. And generally, what we're, what we're trying to do is get more students involved, because the students who are generally ineligible are also not participating in a lot of, in a lot of ways. Um, or things like the partnerships that we're creating with our students in athletics. There's plenty of our athletes that end up on the ineligible list, so they can still participate in practices, but they cannot compete in performances, um, which hinders the, the, the team and the ability of the, the team to make progress. And so the additional steps and interventions that we're putting in place in collaboration with our athletic director, um, it, we plan to have an improvement in the reduction of kids on the ineligible list. So what we've seen, though, is a trend since COVID of, and coming back to holding students accountable for completing their assignments and earning the grades, uh, that they get in order to make sure they're participating. We've seen an, an increase, um, in students on the ineligible list. Students are not performing as well as they were. Um, but that also needs to get to the, to the point of, we need students that are doing the work as well. And so, uh, I don't think it necessarily creates an, uh, an equitable opportunity, because also, if they go on a field trip, they're also missing all the classes that they're on. So it also depends on what the learning experience is and what the purpose is for, and whether or not it's gonna add value, or it's gonna detract from their ability to continue to make progress or do well. Because if they miss instruction, which attendance is a major concern that we have in our district, that also plays into it as well. And so I think that there's a lot of work to be done, no matter what, or I know there's a lot of work to be done, no matter what, in improving student attendance, achievement, participation. Um, and it's gonna take time.
I think, Mrs. Holmes, if I understand you correctly, one of the, the components of your question is around whether or not, if it is a curricular field trip, let's say it's related to a class and not a club, are those students who are ineligible, are, are they not permitted to go on that field?
Well, so I would, I guess, I guess that's, I assume that if you're going on a social studies field trip, right, which the budget was 5,000 and now it's zero, uh, it would be relevant to your coursework, I would assume. And I guess I would assume that whether you're on the ineligible or not list, it doesn't matter. If you're going to Ellis Island to learn about immigration, to really understand American immigration, that everyone would go. And yes, you would miss math that day, but you would certainly further your understanding of what it was like to be an immigrant and have your name changed and whatever happens there, right? So, so I, I guess I'm assuming, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming that everyone would go, there'd be no one ineligible, and that there are sometimes academic field trips that are worthwhile, missing math class for that day, because really, you're gonna gain a very deep understanding of some specific academic thing, like immigration, right?
Yeah, I mean, it, that couldn't happen, no, that way.
Sure.
Yes.
So are, are, is, is our students who are on the ineligible list, do they go on academic field trips?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah, anything that happens during the school day that's part of the instructional day, regardless of eligibility, suits participating. And that's inclusive of our, uh, spirit week activities and things like that.
So I guess my question is, I, I'm concerned that academic field trips are being reduced. For example, social studies in Ellis Island, right, discuss whatever. Because it, I, for me, when I go to some museum or see something, go somewhere, it makes this theoretical thing all of a sudden reeling in my face. It really, that I learn best by going somewhere and becoming immersed. And so my concern is our students not getting that in because of book, book studying is preferred, like, or is it harder, or is it, you know, what?
I think, if I may, you know, we, we can bring back to the, uh, department instructional leaders, uh, the board's, you know, concern about academic field trips and that it appears on paper, and I don't know if this is true per se. It appears on paper that, you know, there's reduction in there, and I guess what, what is the intention behind that? Is that fair to ask of them?
Yes.
Yeah. And that there is, the board is willing to add resources to that. Any other questions for Mr. Wilder?
I do, um, for the faculty review, it had zero. Or, uh, sorry. All the way at the bottom, contract SAT review, do we not do that?
No, we haven't done that in many years. We've, uh, attempted a couple of different programs since I've been here. It was, there was a program that existed many years before I started here as the principal, um, and it was an expensive program that was, uh, an after-school program that students paid for individually. And then, um, we tried to hire individuals to do that and contract out, um, and there wasn't anyone that we could find to contract with. Then we attempted to make it a, a course, um, and have teachers teach it during the school day. The challenge is we became a single ten, and the students who wanted to get into that course, it was hard to fit it in because it conflicted with other courses they wanted to take. So it was hard to, to get students into that course, because in order to make it available and accessible to enough students, you would really need to hire another teacher altogether to teach that course, to make it run enough times to have enough students be able to filter into it. And so that wasn't successful, and that was, uh, maybe two years prior to the issues that we had with COVID. And then, uh, and so where we are right now, we've also attempted some online programs that are still available, um, that students could kind of log into and do the, um, self-guided, self-directed, um, tutorials and things like that. Um, and that was utilized some, and, uh, so we, we have not had success in developing a program for SAT, uh, prep. And, uh, but it's been, it's been something we've looked at a number of times, but there, there are no resources locally or even close enough in our region that would be, um, make it fiscally viable to, uh, run a program.
So we're not preparing our children all for SATs?
So we prepare them through instruction, which is part of the, uh, you know, good instruction prepares you for the standardized test and the SATs. Um, and we've also provided, uh, um, additional, we have tutorial sessions. We also have online resources, but in terms of direct instructions specifically targeted for that, we don't provide that.
Um, also the debate club, it says less travel. Why is there less travel in the debate club?
Uh, there's been, uh, less competitions. So as we're kind of building back, uh, there's just been less travel for those competitions. It's improved over the last two years, but it's still not back to what it was once. Um, and so when I was talking to the advisor, we were talking about, even where we are now, we're not spending nearly that much. And so we're anticipating it being more next year, um, and getting our students, uh, more involved, because our students have been very successful in participating in the program. Um, so like a lot of things that we have, our clubs and activities, we're really trying to build it back up, um, to get more students involved and to increase the, the level of, and frequency of participation with other schools and things like that.
So that number you have in there right now would be okay if there, if there tends to be a couple more debates that arise?
Yes, that accounts for growth.
Okay, and, um, I don't see anything in here for graduation. Is it covered underneath something else?
So when it comes to graduation, there, um, a lot of the graduation components for contracting with the, the different vendors that we use is within the general supply line. Um, that's there, it's towards the top, it's 98,000. Um, so that's built into that overall total, and it's always been like, like, since I've been here. Um, that also includes plans for some additional supplies and things like that. Through the conversations that we've been having as a committee and that I've had with Mrs. Phelan, uh, we are continuing to invest in graduation here on campus, um, to provide that experience for our students. And so, um, some of those funds are through the district.
What proportion is to the district?
I, I don't know that for certain, because it's really dependent on, uh, what we're gonna be pursuing as we move forward, what we're gonna do this year, and then how that's gonna look next year. But I don't know what the proportion is.
Okay, and when you say maintenance, what is that? Is that like the maintenance contract?
Maintenance, like, science?
Yeah, well, it just has a maintenance contract, doesn't say science, doesn't say anything.
Copying, copying machines?
Okay, so that means people come in, set, okay.
Periodic maintenance on different equipment that we have.
Yeah, and copying machines almost daily.
Yeah.
Ashley, you have a question?
I'll just go along with the copy machines, that's my question.
Okay.
Um, so under general supplies, it went from 100,000 to 9,800. You said graduation, a little piece of that would be included in that. And also, um, I'm thinking, um, the, like, paper?
Yes.
For copies and things like that? And then also leasing the copy machines, is that how you do it?
That's under purchase services.
Okay. The leased? The leased machines?
That's my understanding, that really is a, this is a failed question.
Okay, um, is there, um, a short supply of copy, paper-making copies? I'm just curious, because I've worked some districts where it's rationed almost, and I just wanna know if that's the case.
We do have, uh, like, depending on, uh, specific areas, our printers have caps and how many, because the printer ink is very different than our copier ink, um, due to, you know, cost of the ink and efficiency.
Okay.
And so there's caps that teachers have on printing directly to a printer.
Okay.
But, um, for the copy, uh, machines, now they just submit a work order, and we've had no issues with, um, supply.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Go on.
The textbooks for 75,000, that didn't change, 75, 75. Are those, uh, traditional books, or are they most digital, or how, how is that?
It's a combination.
Combination?
Um, but it, it's not just textbooks, it's also the, the literature books that we use in classes. And the other books, because we do push, it's like in our business courses, we wanna build professional libraries for our students. And so we purchase books that we are using in those courses, that the students will then mark up and then take with them. And so those, uh, that factors into that, there's a lot of workbooks, things like that. So it's a variety of, of items, and digital licenses as well.
Okay, my question would have been, um, is there, now that there's not a ration of copies, which is good, if you had additional means, is there a capability to print out the digital means if necessary or if wanted? So, thank you. Um, also, one last one. The supplies for the library went from 14 to 40?
Yes.
And it says there's renovation funds, maybe you've talked about this a little bit, um, uh, grant funds for this. But does this include renovation of, say, like, the iPads and the Chromebooks and the laptops or whatever that needs to be? Is that part of the library?
Yeah.
That's IT's budget.
Um, I just, do you know what grant those funds are coming from? Like, is that 40,300 in your final board 13?
That is not, the, the number that's there is not grant-funded. So I think that note was really for myself and Mrs. Phelan, because there's additional funds that we're going to use, um, to, uh, renovate the space and improve upon the space, and that, those are gonna come from grant funds. And that's not reflected in that request.
So the overall title might be 75 or something like that, and that, the, the difference would come from that source.
Yes.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Um, any other questions for Mr. Wilder? Thank you very much, Mr. Wilder.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilder, next up is, uh, middle school principal is Michelle Nolan. Nolan.
Hello, everyone. Um, thank you for your continued support for the middle school. Um, but as you look at the middle school budget, you're gonna notice that I'm requesting an increase of 51,500. So I wanna go through why, um, we are requesting that for this year. Um, just generally, like, for example, postage meter, uh, this past summer and, and probably this summer, we send out our packages to our parents. Um, and with the increase in postage, we wanna make sure that we have enough money to make sure that we do that. And then under general supplies, you'll notice that there's an increase of 50,000. Um, over the last three years, I have been trying to replace, um, the furniture in our classrooms. Um, our student desks and chairs are 22 years old. Um, many of them are rusted, they're wobbly. Uh, we found out during COVID, they are extremely uncomfortable. Um, so we are trying to replace each year a certain number of classrooms. Um, and so this will give the new principal the opportunity to purchase additional flexible seating and, uh, desks and chairs for the students, okay? Um, and then as you look through, you know, um, we added some money for the science department. Um, we are now doing, uh, more, um, hands-on labs. And, uh, with the transition from the high school, leaving the middle school last year, uh, some of our equipment we need to replace, um, and so we added additional money for that and to really build up our supplies in the science department. And if you have any questions, that's pretty much where we were.
Any questions for Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
Um, so I see that English is down by 1,000 dollars, and I think tech.
Yes, okay. So, um, the English, um, money is down, uh, the, the deal for the English department, Tracy Orland had requested, um, additional money towards textbooks, and so she felt that they didn't need as much in the supply line. Okay, so that was a decision for the English department. And then the tech department, um, we have a lot of, uh, materials that were purchased this year, okay? Um, that we really could back off a couple of thousand, because we have it just sitting in the room.
Okay. Now, when it comes to, like, the eighth grade stepping up ceremony or graduation, does that come out of, like, a general fund?
My general supply line. Yeah. But my expenses are very minimal for the moving up ceremony. Any other questions?
I was going to say quickly about the paper as well. We don't ration paper.
We don't ration paper. Um, are we using less paper than we have? Absolutely. Um, you know, and there is plenty of paper. There's too much paper.
And ink.
Uh, ink, we're good, we're good at the middle school.
The machines are working.
Machines are working. We got a new machine last year, it's working pretty well.
That's great.
So we're good.
And color, do you have color?
Oh, color printers? No. We have one little printer. Uh, no.
You can't afford a jet, but come on.
No, we do have color paper.
Okay.
Um, if I had a color printer, like KLR, I would be running everything in color, so it's good that I don't have access to it.
There are, if, if people want things printed in color, there are ways that they can request it, but it's...
Thank you.
Do we have a question?
Jen?
No, no, I don't feel I have that answer for you.
Oh, well, you can, you can answer it, even though I didn't ask the question. I have a different question. I'll start with the field trip one first.
Okay, um, in the middle school, uh, because we are a SEP school, there's money built into the grant. So for example, this year, our seventh grade, we're taking a sharp reservation to work on team building, and I'm already here. Um, we plan a lot of trips, like, for example, our family consumer science class went to ShopRite yesterday, um, to do a lesson. So we, we kinda try to do some field trips within our district, where we can leave in the morning, come back, and then we don't have to pay for buses. So we're trying to make it as minimal, um, and then we do have our grade level trips. Go ahead.
Um, my question is about the furniture?
Yes.
Uh, so, you know, it's under the general supply line, so there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yeah.
Um, but my question is, you said you've been purchasing furniture over the past couple of years, so many classrooms at a time. Is this like a big push to finish it off?
No, we're not even there yet.
Great, so, so I guess if 38,000 last year, you were able to outfit so many rooms, why do you need?
Did not, because last year, the money that came to purchase new furniture came through rollover funds through the grants. So if you look at my budget the last couple of years, you're like, it's very minimal.
Okay, okay, that makes sense then, because I'm like, if there's furniture in this budget, it's so much more.
No, there isn't.
It came from a different source.
And then what I'm doing is if there's any leftover general supply money, like teacher desks, I mean, our teacher desks are 22 years old, they're literally, the legs are falling off. So if I have extra money, we purchase a few each year.
Right.
Um, so it's just really to set the new principal up, kinda like get into a cycle, which we should have done three years ago, but with COVID, it was kinda difficult. But try to get into that cycle that we can start replacing five to seven rooms a year.
So, so now the new line item is 88,000, whatever. What is that? What is that, at that rate, how long before you have new furniture, right?
In the whole building?
Yeah.
When I first priced everything out, we were looking at 350 to 400,000 to replace all the student desks and chairs for the whole building. We're probably halfway through, through the money I've gotten the last couple of years.
So this is, this adjustment to the budget line is sort of like?
Three to four years.
Yeah, and it's probably not going to go back. It'll go down maybe a little bit if that, but it's probably going to be there.
I think you need to get into a cycle, you know, again, we've been in the building 22 years, we have not replaced anything. Linda Thalia just found money for me to replace cafeteria tables that were falling apart. They were 22 years old. I mean, we've gotten good juice out of the furniture. So just getting into that cycle to make sure that, you know, each year, we kind of replace a certain amount.
Sure, so, I have a question for you. Can I ask you now? What do the other schools do for furniture? Are they building new furniture replacements into their school budgets? Is that something that they should be doing?
Is something they should be doing, but they are here tonight and they can probably answer that question better than me.
Textbooks, grade six through eight.
Yes.
Remain in the same 31.
Yep.
We're using textbooks as an overarching description of computer access.
No.
Literature.
It would consider our trade books, so for example, we are introducing a new book for sixth grade. So we need to purchase hard copies of that book. But then we also have an account where we have digital copies. Okay, so we'll offer to the kids one or the other.
So it's more for like books for lessons because it's not for science?
I mean, it could be textbooks, it could be textbook replacements. I don't believe that the directors, at least at this point, are requesting.
I haven't seen a textbook from, and any of my kids their entire run-through millennial.
Well, during COVID, we kind of pulled back on that.
It can be digital.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, textbook is a little bit overarching.
Because I'll give you an example.
Us older folks seeing textbook and think the 20 pound.
Yes, like the social studies textbook, the eighth, seventh and eighth grade social studies textbook, American History, which is the Brown book that they use, was purchased when I was still a teacher, so we're going back about 12 years. Now, we have a choice, we can purchase a hard copy of that book at about 125 a copy or we can purchase a digital copy for $70. So you got to look at the cost factor there, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Holton.
Next up, and perhaps to answer your question, Ms. Holmes, is the principal of Rutherford Elementary School, Mr. Palmer.
Hello and welcome to Rutherford's Board Presentation of Budget. And thank you for your support, thank you for everything that you've been doing all year long for all of us. It's greatly appreciated. You'll notice that in my budget, I'm only asking for slightly over $10,000 as an increase. For the last couple of years, we really haven't done any kind of any increase. Part of what the increases are connected to are the areas that we have notated that there is anticipated cost increases, whether it's through inflation or whatnot. You'll notice, I'll answer the question on the field trips. I did actually double the cost there and I jacked that up because we are looking at trying to get the children out and doing more of those field trips. Right now, presently, the school is, the grade levels are looking at what the students are going to be doing in the springtime for their trips presently. So that's going to help jumpstart for next year with the incoming principal being able to maybe offer more options. Also, in my general budget line, I do have, I believe it's right now $15,000 earmarked for furniture replacement. We have been very fortunate because of the kindness of the former principal of KLR, which is Mrs. Holton, did set me up very well with the replacement cycle. So I am a testament to the fact that she's trying to do that for the next coming principal for the middle school. We have, between the reconfiguration and the change out of furniture, we've been able to rotate and get rid of the things that have been breaking and get very age-appropriate furniture for the students. And we actually just received not too long ago 40 more desks. So we are cycling through what that is. Some of the other pieces that might be also an increase, the postage piece is definitely a concern for us as well. So we wanted to make sure that we have that in our general budget as well. And then you'll also notice that the, there's an increase, I forget the name of the line item, but it is, it's part of the technology piece. We have added like a $3,000 to that. And that is in anticipation of replacement of iPads, chargers and the charging blocks. That is to help offset some of the things from IT. In conversation with Ms. Gordon and the things that are happening, we want to be able to have our in-house supply of things when the students break their iPads and screens and whatnot. And I want to say a shout out to the technology department for absolutely being on top of replacement pieces this year. It has been less and they have been able to repair many of the iPads that have had cracked screens. So it's really, I want to say thank you to them. So those are really the things that are on the budget for Rutherford. And when I look at it, it's the $10,000 at 500 students in the building, it's really looking at an additional $20 per student, so.
Questions for Mr. Palmer?
Okay.
He's running.
Next up is Ms. Ginny Gallat, principal of George L. Cook Elementary School. Ms. Gallat?
Hello, good evening. So we have a small increase in our budget from last year. We have two line items, the postage meter and maintenance contracts that didn't roll into the budget from the prior year, so we're putting them back in. This year, we had to transfer money out of our general supplies into postage. And we did an increase of that by $500 just because of the increase in postage. We've added $2,000 more to our conference lines. We're hoping to just continue to support the staff in professional development and, you know, it triples down to benefit the kids. Field trips, the teachers right now are first grade, there's an increase in that line from 2,500 to 4,000 right now. Like our first graders are studying a unit on community and the postal truck was in front of the school and the kids were touring the truck. Next week, our first graders or another group of first graders are walking down to visit the fire department. We have a group going to the library to ShopRite, so, and they'll continue to have field trip experiences they didn't fall. So we added more money to that line. General supplies, every year, the teachers get supply money. And so we increased that just because the cost of everything has increased. So we give them another $100 in that line. And I just didn't like that we were sort of not at an even number for the supplies in the library and I thought it was $4,000, so that's it. So we're looking at about a $15,000 increase. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah?
So the two lines that were there, are they where I'm budgeting for last year?
They were, I think there was a glitch with recap, like when they transferred over. It just didn't roll in. So like when we did the budget, we just said roll that over, but it, actually the money didn't show up there.
I'm sure that you mailed things last year from credit.
It worked out just fine, like we just transferred that money from our, yeah, and we had a credit on our postage account, I didn't know you could do that. So I learned that. Before the end of the year, our main office secretary dumped the rest of the money into the postage machine and it worked out great, so she's a saver. Any other questions? Okay, that was a nice, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gallat.
Next up, principal of MSC Chase Elementary School, Mr. Bill Frandino. Mr. Frandino?
Good evening, everyone. It seems like everyone has already answered a lot of the questions, so I'm trying to see. We have a modest increase as well and a lot of that were estimating what the price increases for shipping and so on, as well as materials would be. We also, we feel like we're in a good place with our amounts on field trips and such and we really pushed that. One thing COVID probably brought to us is if you remember when we came out of kind of the peak in the fall, we decided, hey, let's really push field trips and then we'll also do one in the spring. And then we just started doing that as a regular thing. So we're trying to push as many as we can. When, if and when we run short there, we do draw from general if that helps compensate for it. Otherwise, I think really just to open up to you for any questions. We also have a furniture cycle and we're recovering a little bit from the transition in furniture that happened during COVID, where much of it was stored and we had thinned out the buildings and the process of obtaining that back and so on is partially sloppy. But for the most part, we're reorganized at this point. Yes?
What is social emotional wellness support?
Social emotional wellness support, we do draw a lot on our PBIS line and we've found that it's a really great thing for our building. Earlier today, I actually had had some what you might call Chase swag. It's hats and water bottles and frisbees that we're going to give out this year on, at Field Day. And anything related to social emotional wellness support for the students as well as funding the dispute resolution center. They train some students that if there are certain issues going on, that the students can take care of it themselves under the guidance of our social emotional wellness teacher as well as some students that were trained in the process. They kind of draw up a contract, sign off, and so that's all part of that.
Any other questions for Mr. Frandino?
The only other thing I wanted to add, since Mrs. Phaila is not here, is I believe text lines are also one-to-one debatable from the state. So you rarely see a text line go down, you would only see an increase. There is a wide definition, but also that amount is there. Unless they were to switch it over to another building, things like that within the district, the total amount every year, the state just gives it back to you as long as you spend it. And if you don't, I think you get less.
Yeah, well, there are some limits to it, it's not unlimited.
Yeah, there's some weirdness with it, but for my purposes, I know that I just need to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frandino. Mr. Frandino was referring to textbook aid. So the last but not least, principal will be presenting her school's budget and it's a new school this year, is Ms. Jennifer Gore, principal of the St. John Street Fairview School, which includes our pre-K program and our alternative high school program. Ms. Gore?
Thank you, thank you for your continued support. We've had some great success already with the St. John Street Community School and we're looking forward to some continued success. As you know, I have no budget to compare to, so there are no increase justifications for me tonight. However, I was very mindful with creating this budget. I worked with my staff to look at our building goals and to compare some of the elementary budgets as well, just to get an idea of what we need. And we have created a budget that you see here tonight. We are really focused on bringing our community into our program for those experiences as well as field trips. We have our students that are in the community school that are participating different field trips throughout the community, bringing community members into our programs, preschool as well. We're looking to increase their exposure out within the community and so on. As far as a, I'm going to highlight, we have a library line item. We're looking to incorporate working library into our high school program. And we are using some professional development to increase our experiences for our students and for our teachers. And that professional development will be ongoing because I think that a one and done is not what we want to see. We want to have that continued for both our staff and our students. Questions for me? There's not really much to give questions of, I'm happy to answer any.
Textbooks?
Sure, for which high school or?
I was thinking preschool.
So preschool, we have creative curriculum which has both digital and hard copy resources for our students. So there is availability to do that as for digital purposes or purchase them. We do have supplies that go home based on that information for that.
So again, that's in three or four years old, they have like a workbook?
They don't have workbooks, but there are digital copies of different programming. So like for instance, they're doing the building, a building unit now, sort of different books that would be purchased for that particular unit for creative curriculum. And that would be available, there's digital copies that should obviously be used and sent home. And then there's the in-classroom copies as well.
And they have like iPads or something?
We do, we have four iPads per classroom. That becomes a center, so an educational center in creative curriculum. The students are constantly moving, movement by the motor and things of that nature. At one of the centers, sometimes you will see students working on the iPads.
Would you say it's like 20% of the day they're on iPad?
I would say it's like.
Okay.
I would say it's that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mrs. Gore? Ginny would have made it in the evening at 6:00. Ginny would have made it in the evening at 6:00.
Thank you, Ms. Dorman. Next up, I don't know, I believe I'm talking about visual arts and performing arts, is that correct? Okay, I guess it is. So in our visual arts and performing arts budgets, you will see some increases primarily driven by field trips. So there is a new one happening in our high school visual arts program as well as inflationary increases relative to supplies through our vendors. It's a relatively straightforward visual arts budget, increasing only by $2,000, going from $37,000 to $39,650. Any questions from the board on those increases? And in our performing arts department, our music and dance department, again, there's some slight increases here. We see an increase in field trips. We see supplies increasing very slightly. And we also see some increases in mileage, I believe, as a result of, I guess potentially conferences or other performances. And, you know, kind of going back to digging out from under COVID-19, the budget lines were kind of thrown, I'll say realigned, I don't want to say thrown all over the place, but realigned during the pandemic because things like field trips weren't happening. But as we slowly ratchet up to where we were pre-pandemic, you'll see these types of changes as well as inflationary increases. So repairs is increasing by $2,000 and mileage is increasing as well as we kind of expand student performances. Any questions on this, on the performing arts budget? Okay, next up, here to present the interscholastic athletics budget is our interim director of athletics, Mr. Ryan Jasper. Mr. Jasper? Oh, and Mr. Murphy presenting as well? Are you doing, you're doing physical education? So we'll start with athletics and then the interim director of physical education, Mr. Murphy, you're on deck.
Good evening, everybody. So our, the first increase that I am graciously asking for is the non-instructional equipment line. The two big ticket items that we do need to purchase this year, one is the high jump pit for our outdoor track team. Number two are scoreboards for our gym here at the middle school. Those are approximately $13,000 for the scoreboards and $7,000 for the high jump pit. The scoreboards are original to the building, but they are beyond their useful life at this point. Going down, everything is contractual there. Reconditioning of equipment, that is a slight increase to replace football helmets in order for them to be certified for competition. There has been a shortage of materials since COVID, so we are looking to move in the past. The supply line is a semi-significant increase. We are looking to gauge interest in adding girls' flag football next year, which is now a New York State sanctioned sport. We are going to survey the student body at the end of the year to kind of gauge the interest on that and see if it's something that the student body would support. The remainder of that increase justification is for a uniform replenishment. We are hoping to get on a three-year uniform cycle where each team would be given new uniforms every three years.
Any questions? Is things all right?
Ms. LaRosa?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
How are our uniforms right now? Don't they look shape right?
Some, some are. I know varsity girls' basketball was replaced last year. Varsity boys' basketball was replaced this year. Baseball and softball were just replaced last week, so they will be new going into this season. Baseball and softball were just replaced last week, so they will be new going into this season. Wrestling, we kind of scrambled for at the beginning of this year. That was a little bit of an unexpected hurdle that we had to clear there. The fall sports, I know volleyball is short. Modified football, primarily the modified sports are suffering right now. So the goal with, with the, just with the increase is that every three years, one of the levels within each program would be replaced. So varsity was to get it this year, next year would be JV, the following year would be modified, and then we'd be back varsity. And that way, hopefully, everybody is always fresh.
So now with the uniforms, do you like the warm-up gear go with the uniforms? I'll give you an example. We went to one of the wrestling matches, like all the schools came in, match, and like win things. All Monticello comes in, nothing matched.
So, so each sport is given its own budget. And depending on how much is in that budget, depending on what uniforms need to be replaced, what equipment needs to be ordered. Wrestling also has chemicals, mat tape, things like that that need to be ordered. A lot of stuff outside of the primary uniform is usually supplied by booster clubs through funding. Anything personalized, any extra gear like that.
Okay, because I know, I think it's cross-country. They have like the wins jackets and stuff like that, but that's not personalized. They have to give that back at the end of the season.
That they do, yes. So cross-country uniforms are a little bit cheaper, just because it's the tank top and the shorts.
Nothing there.
What's that?
Nothing there.
There's not much to it. Whereas basketball, you require a home and away, so they're a lot more expensive. Same thing with football. They're required different colors for.
Okay, so we have enough money, do you think, for the uniform?
Oh, yeah.
The uniform one?
Absolutely.
And how many teams are you thinking play it this year?
The majority of our modified teams are varsity volleyball team. Football, there's constantly just due to the wear and tear. There's always a few that need to be thrown in there. Modified basketball for girls, modified boys' basketball, and most likely modified baseball and softball. Are the urgent list.
Mr. Grodin?
I have one. Is $4,000 enough for all the athletic tape and for the trainers to address the team?
So since we have not had a trainer here recently, we are looking to replenish our, restock our medical supplies.
And that's enough?
Should be plenty.
Okay.
Ashley, you have a question?
Ice packs, med kits.
But how about the cheerleaders?
Cheerleaders will be re-upped next year as well.
Next year, so. Football and.
Yes.
They, they don't use the same, or they don't use the same?
That's a question for Coach Lasher. I'm not sure, I get to whether it's fall or October, probably.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Jasper?
I'll go with another question. The banners in the gym, have they been updated?
They have been updated as recently as 2020, I believe. I could be mistaken, I'm not sure about that. I think Alpine Scheme was added, that was in 2020, I'm not sure. I can certainly check.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jasper.
Thank you.
The last departmental budget tonight, and perhaps his last budget presentation, is Mr. Murphy, our interim director of physical education.
So we do have some machine repair. We have some contractual stuff. But one line, when I went through the budget, I found that we didn't have the high school, middle school. So I worked with Lisa Phaila. It was getting drawn out of the athletic budget. Didn't make any sense. So hopefully, when Mr. Jasper takes over in the future, he has a clear budget line for both high school, middle school, as well as the elementary. So there's an increase of $6,300. That's because we pulled that money out of the athletic portion and put it in. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, and thank you administrators for your presentations tonight. Just to wrap up this budget presentation, and then we can take some general comments or questions from the board. Budget calendar, you see some dates there in front of you. The big date, you know, next big date coming up is April 21st is the final legal date for budget adoption by the board. We would be seeking to possibly have board budget adoption prior to that. Annual budget hearing, which would give community members an opportunity to ask questions about the budget is on April 4th. And then May 16th is the annual meeting. Excuse me, that should just be the budget vote. We're just doing the budget vote. And then on May 17th, we will have a meeting the next night for the board to accept, consider accepting the results of the budget vote. Next up, on March 16th, there'll be presentations from the curriculum, staff, development, people personnel services, special programs, and instructional support staffing, benefits, district-wide expenditures. Any potential changes to personnel would be discussed at that meeting. And then we are tentatively on track for an April 11th budget adoption. So that's the board meeting. We would like the board to act on adopting a budget. You know, there's a lot of factors that could go into that. Any questions from, well, I guess we're moving into D2.
Any questions overarching? Anything that you didn't get answered previously that the board would like to ask? Or discussion items? Everybody satisfied? Very well. Once again, thank you to everyone who presented this evening. Moving on.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jennifer Jasper. So we saw, you know, somewhat significant increases in all of the schools' budgets, basically. I, I guess that's all incorporated in Lisa's budget. There's a surprise there, right?
Well, we have not shared with the board what a, a proposed 23, 24 budget would look like with these proposed increases in that. So the only thing that's been shared with the board thus far is the rollover budget. That would not include the increases you saw tonight.
Are you phased by the increases you saw tonight?
No, I think they're, they're very much needed. We do need to have regular maintenance cycles. We do want our kids going back out and our staff going back out on field trips. We need our athletic uniforms and supplies to be updated. These are things that either were shelved or kind of tabled during COVID, or the district historically has not appropriately funded. So I, I think, you know, right now, these are things that are needed. The administrators met with, in some cases, Ms. Phaila and me, in other cases, with just Ms. Phaila, to go over these items. So she's fully aware of these, and I'm aware of most of the items that were discussed tonight.
So that brings us to Mrs. Greco.
I'd like to bring up for approval consent items G1 to L2.
Have one through out there?
Oh, it's, there's nothing there. I mean.
Oh, it's a play that they left, yeah, play sold her, okay, I'm sorry. We have a second on, made by Mrs. Rivera. Any discussion? All in favor? So, thank you very much, Mrs. Greco. Moving on. Information, reports, and discussions, board roundtable. Jen? Put you on the spot? We can always come back around. Mrs. Rivera?
No, just congratulations to our winter sports students and all of the amazing achievements. And there was a few events, and Chase had the PTO Valentine's Day dance, so that was absolutely adorable. So, her failure.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rivera.
I have two things. One is just to share that my son went on the eighth grade trip to Bear Mountain for ice skating. And it was a fun time.
It is nice, awesome there.
So it's pretty cool. So I just appreciate that. The other thing is I noticed on the, I guess we get this monthly, the onboard newspaper? Sure. There was a section in it that I think is worthwhile to maybe check into at some point. But students are building a race car. These are schools that are in the southern tier. That's where I grew up. So Deligo, Keander, and Waverly. So they're actually building race cars from scratch, and they're using their bus garage. And I just, I know it sounds sort of like lofty. However, it's a, it's a charitable organization that's helping funding this, this project. So I think it's worthwhile to look into, and I think it would be an asset to the community too, to have more people with the skills to help out in the, in the trades and the entire shops in town.
Thank, thank you so much. Ms. LaRosa?
I attended the Board Association meeting Monday night via Zoom. That was my first one I attended. I learned a lot. I do want to piggyback off what I think is like the graduation on winter sports. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Jasper for that video that I still think is amazing that we have with the Monty pride. And, and as far as that trip went, the eighth grade had a blast. My son was too tired to do any chores, so they did have a great time. That's it.
Mr. Grodin?
Just opening up my phone, it's just overwhelmed. Congratulations to Lexi Hines for getting first place, kicking every other person's butt on the hill in slalom, and then fourth place in the grand slalom. Aliamoto, 1,000 points, absolutely amazing. Tiana DeJesus, 55-meter hurdles, second place, and then going up on the fifth. We wish her the best of luck. The students have distinction. Congratulations, because it's not always about the sports, but it's about sports and the athletics. I said that. Sports and the academics. It was close. It's always on my mind. My brother's keeper, MBK, Demetrius Edwards going there and to the leadership workshop, and Dylan Harney. I want to say that there, I can remember being here in ninth grade, not here, but over there, and having a leadership conference myself when it was that. I can still remember what I did here. And I hope that the young men are able to positively add to our culture. And it's, it's going to be, I think, invaluable. And then if they can pass on those skills to other young men that they are interacting with, I think it's amazing. So we have leaders on the field and in the classroom, and I'm just excited about being a Monty Panther. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grodin. Mrs. Greco?
I also attended the Sullivan County School Boards Association meeting on Monday. It was unfortunately via Zoom, and Wendy was there as well. So it was actually, I think that, it seemed like the agenda was abbreviated because of the change in modality, but it was a really robust discussion. And the opportunity to hear from other board members throughout the county was really exciting.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Greco. I'd like to echo everyone's sentiment for our winter athletes and the standouts for an outstanding season. And thank you to all the coaches and staff that helped them along that path to achieve those goals. Me and Todd also attended yesterday a interview committee meeting for Assistant Superintendent of the District, which went very well and was very enlightening for me, not really kind of having the education background. So it was very nice to attend that as well. Thank you, everybody, for your board table, your roundtable. Come up with anything, Jen?
No.
All right. Next up, we have our reports from our principals. Any questions or comments regarding?
I do, Ms. Gore, she's still here. I do have a few questions for you. What is the pre-K emotional?
So we're using roller. So we had the placement up, come in and train our teachers on roller. One of my goals for the program was to bridge the gap between preschool and kindergarten. So we're providing that opportunity in preschool because that's what they're going to be seeing going into kindergarten. So they're working on identifying their feelings. They come in and talk about their day in a, in a community circle. And then they, so have an action, and they have, they love it. They love being able to talk about their feelings. You'll even see one student in particular had a rough moment, and he was able to say, I'm red right now. And, you know, he made it a minute. And we're giving them those opportunities to be able to express themselves in a way that's other than a behavior.
The anger manager for the older kids, is that a one-time thing?
No, we, obviously, one of our roles is to bring in as many opportunities as possible. We will continuously bring in programs like that and those individuals from the community to continuously do that. We now have a guidance counselor that comes, and she will also be adapting to help with that program. Students at first were very closed off, but, and then opened up. And, you know, it was a great opportunity, and we're seeing great progress with their relationships with the community.
Awesome. And like, there's two children, I believe, you mentioned in your fourth grade honor roll?
Great, awesome. I've not had the idea of having older kids, how about the younger kids to dance? That was very. And tonight, we had therapy night, and we had some volunteers as well. Four of the high schoolers came and participated in nursing night, helped set up, and interacted with the family, and then the students, so.
Is the Merrill's on that?
No, we're working on getting some quotes for that. The students will be making one in the high school. So they just painted the weight locker, and they're going to be doing that. They're working with Tom Basket on making the design. They also, yesterday, we looked at some of their designs that they created after school are going to be on t-shirts. So those will be available to that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Ms. Norton, Sheila? Okay.
All right, moving on to policy committee memo. I don't think we have any there, thing there this evening. One second. We should be having second readings at the next meeting. When Janet comes back, she should be back this week. So we will have the second readings of some policies at the next meeting. None of them were dire to get in. I think most of them were changes to a little bit of verbiage here and there, but no extreme changes for the most part. Victoria?
Oh, I have a question. The cell phone policy, is that something we're going to revisit every year?
The cell phone policy?
Is that part of code of conduct?
It'll be part of the code of conduct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're talking like in terms of student use of that. No, that'd be the code of conduct.
Thank you.
So moving on, then we have correspondence outcomes, none at this time, and capital project update. Dr. Evans?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Before I turn this over to Chris Ledaney of CPL, who'll be presenting on the building condition survey. We had an owners' meeting yesterday, and I've shared with the board the update from that. It's kind of in a spreadsheet form. It gives you kind of an updated, I'll say punch list type of detail about the things that are going on right now, wrapping up kind of the high school part of the project and the tennis courts, and then moving into phase four, which is primarily site work at the elementary schools. Right now, the, the big kind of visible pieces, and they're big pieces too, are the paneling on the north side of the 100, 200 wing. My understand, what we've been most recently told is that those panels are on their way and that they are arriving this month, and that we anticipate installation to be complete by May. And then similarly with the tennis court, that that will be completed later in the spring, if I recall correctly from our owners' meeting yesterday. So with that being said, and if you have any questions on that, Chris is here to answer as well. But he's first going to present on our, and, not annual, every five years, the school, the school districts require to complete a building condition survey. That was completed by our architects, Clark Patterson Lee. And here tonight to share it with the board, there's no board, official board action that has to happen, but you should be aware of the VCS, is Mr. Ledaney. Mr. Ledaney?
Good evening, everyone. Does anybody need a hard copy of the presentation? Anybody else? Sometimes it's a little easier to follow along, you know? So, thank you, Dr. Evans, for the capital project update. Moving into the building condition survey. So like Dr. Evans said, this is a process that happens every five years. You know, there's 2010 one, 2015 one, but in 2020, the state education department decided to stagger the school districts. So Monticello fell in the 2022 year. But the next one that comes up is going to be five years from that point. So this VCS year, which SED is called, the 2020 year, is a little staggered, and it's going to, you know, pick up. It's over that they're not reviewing them all at once. So that, that's just the little background. In the first, first slide, you're like, just a cheat sheet too. So just going to give you an overview of what the building condition survey is. It's a state mandated inspection of all the buildings that are occupied by district students and staff. So you'll see on, on this presentation that. presentation that there won't be the former admin building, which is what calls the White House. There won't be the former bus garage that doesn't exist anymore. Duggan School doesn't have any students in it, so you won't see that. On this report, you'll see the three elementary schools, St. John's High School, the middle school. So the state also considers the high school and the middle school, one building, believe it or not. So we've kind of lumped those in into one section here within the summary. So this process provides detailed information necessary to maintain safe and healthy school environments for public schoolchildren. The state will allow school districts to properly plan and prioritize capital improvements, allow the state to properly plan for building aid, reimbursements in the district. So for the state, this gives them a heads up of how much building aid that they're going to have to produce the next five, 10, 15 years. I have to say that this building condition survey process is a kind of a big picture, nuts and bolts process and inspection of all your buildings. It sets a good foundation for planning for the future, but it doesn't cover everything. It doesn't cover the nuance of any given building. The same form that we have to fill out for a huge high school is the same form we have to fill out for a shed, believe it or not, that's owned by the district. So with that said, you know, you got to create a form somehow. So it's again, it's a good start. But the five-year plan or the master plan, which kind of piggybacks off of this, that the district updates basically every year, that's where the rubber hits the road and that's where we pair these nuts and bolts issues with programmatic issues. For example, I know Mr. Wilder's brought up in the high school library, there's some things that need to get changed. As an architect, I'm going to go in there, look at the windows, the flooring, the ceiling. I'm not going to be able to tell on a day-to-day basis if there needs a programmatic shift or if the library is too small or is it too big, you know, things like that. So the master plan or the five-year plan is a little bit more of a detailed, helpful document to push some of this planning forward. And that's where you see this last line item is the VCS is the foundation for the five-year master plan, which is more detailed document and covers the information a little bit more clearly. So yes, again, we pair that nuts and bolts with the programmatic needs. So moving on to your first building here, MC Chase Elementary School. So just do a quick overview of the year that building was built, the area of the building, where the square footage, some of the main attention items for this particular building is the main distribution panel and transformers, like the electrical components of the building, paving and stormwater management, that's the site aspect of the building, fire code upgrades, which is in the corridors, plate glass windows within all three of the elementary schools. Right now, we had to put this on the VCS, but that scope of work is going to be addressed in task four, which is the next phase of the capital project, which is going to, you know, going to the state soon for review. But again, and then you'll see some of the parentheses I have on some of these items. There's a little bit more to it than just, the next one's HVAC upgrades. Through the Federal, you know, Act of ESER and ARP, the American Rescue Plan, money has been, you know, entered into the school districts to address things like HVAC needs. So HVAC upgrades that we did document on this VCS will get addressed sooner than later, which is a great thing. Typically, you have a VCS, these line items come out here, you know, it takes a while to get things going to get those fixed, you know, or in motion to even get building permit and things like that. Toilet room renovations, the speaker PA system, and then the windows. The next section is what I call the rolling basis section. This is going to be fairly typical amongst most buildings. This is something that you want to stay on top of as far as doors, ceilings, exterior and interior doors. There's, and then also brick repointing. So that's the facade you're bringing. A lot of these buildings that were built in the 60s and 70s that were made out of brick, that's your first defense of water getting into the building. So repointing is some of the mortar joints and things like that, fail, crack, typical, you know, as buildings get older, you know, they degrade a little bit, so you just got to stay up on it. So typically with any given building condition survey, we always put in these kind of rolling basis items. It's always good to keep up on them so that you're replacing 10, 20 doors out of clipping, not 200. So estimated cost when tally up all this stuff, again, this is big picture. So this is, you know, give or take is about, you know, a little over six billion of work that would have to go into Chase. And then we also have for each school, four photos, you know, some outdated controls, the windows, those play glass windows within the corridor, and some of your door frames, zoom in on areas where they're a little rusted. And, you know, when I say replace the doors, we'd be also looking at the frame, replace the frame, or fix the frame. Moving on to Cook. So Cook, I mean, these elementary schools have very similar needs. So paving, sidewalk, stormwater management, fire code upgrades, again, those corridors, HVAC improvements, which we are doing through the SR ARP and the EPC project that you guys are already doing, addresses some of these HVAC upgrades, which is good. So this stuff is already in motion, even though it's on this report. Toilet room renovations, speaker PA system, athletic field and tennis courts. So at Cook, I know that there's a somewhat real fields, tennis court there, little track and field, things like that. If there is a desire to keep that, those things need attention and need to get renovated. Exterior windows, interior electrical panels, and the rolling bases items for a total of 9.6 million. And some photos, very similar to Chase, plate glass windows, exterior windows. You see that that kitchen, really that's a fire code upgrade, creating a barrier between your kitchen and your corridors. So just a rolling door there at a fusible link could help out that situation. And then some piping insulation that needs to get fixed as well. So moving on to Rutherford. Again, the attention items here are very similar to the other two buildings, paving, sidewalks, stormwater management, fire code, HVAC, toilet room, windows, electrical panels. Cook and Rutherford were built at the same time, have very similar floor plans. They're almost identical. So these buildings are going to be very similar in the scope of work that needs to happen. Just over nine million for that building as well. And then some photos of very similar aspects per each building. So we move on to the middle school, high school. And we're kind of wrapping up the larger renovation that we did in the 100, 200 wing. We also did some roofing work as well. And again, the middle school is paired with the one building. The middle school has a whole new roof there. That was page one in this capital project. But there's still attention items here. Again, the paving sidewalks, the stormwater management, where all these buildings, again, are going into the task four scope. So between the civil and site work improvements, and then also the fire code upgrades, you know, with task two in the high school project, we see costing more than expected. We're going to have to figure out exactly what fits the scope once we do get building permit. And we could do that by being creative with bidding out the work with bid alternates and things of that nature. So another, some other attention items, domestic hot and cold water piping, again, HVAC upgrades, which are currently happening with the EPC, the boilers are just replaced, control work to be done, toilet room renovations, electrical panels, windows, roofing. So this is all very similar stuff, again, the nuts and bolts of the building. And then the rolling basis costs are, and subjects are fairly similar, repointing things, the building envelope, interior doors, exterior doors, flooring and ceilings, estimated cost here is about 17.1 million. And got some photos there, roofing, loading dock, some rusted lintels above windows, and then just a picture of, you know, the existing windows that are getting closer to their, beyond their useful life. The St. John's Street Education Center, I know that's turned my head for it and SED calls it. I know that that program of that building has changed over the years. Seems like a lot of great stuff there though. Overall, the attention, this building needs some attention. As far as the HVAC upgrades, the loading dock reconstruction, paving sidewalks, facade reconstruction, chimney reconstruction, toilet room renovations, windows roofing, this building needs some love for sure. Rolling basis stuff is very similar, flooring, ceiling, exterior, interior doors. Building wasn't unsatisfactory. I don't want to alarm anybody, but that building is getting to the point where you recommend, you know, putting some money into it just to, again, keep that building envelope tight, right? Like roofing, windows, things of that nature. So anything that you do inside is protected, basically. So tally all that up, about 13.5 million. Then you got some pictures here. This is an old brick building, old masonry. It's, you know, it definitely needs some attention in some areas. So that said, we keep it fairly brief, but also we don't want to leave anything out. But I want to open the floor to any questions, comments, concerns. Ashley?
A question about asbestos, because these are older links. That doesn't cover asbestos, right? So if something's found, then that would be what, did it really got 20% increase or what?
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's between 20 and 40, depending on what kind of asbestos you do find. So for example, the asbestos that you would find under normal tile flooring is fairly easy to abate. But the asbestos that you would find, you know, behind a brick facade or underneath a wood gym floor, that's really tough to abate. That takes a lot more time, heavier material, manpower, all that. So depending on what type of asbestos it is, could have a major cost difference. But ultimately, yeah, you're between 20 and 40%. So anytime you do a project, right, you go and basically hire a hazardous material consultant to come in and sample everything that we're going to touch. Your state law is that it's assumed that it's hot, which means that it has bad stuff in it until you prove otherwise. So even if a building was built yesterday and you were going to knock a hole in the sheet rock wall, you still got to get a test of hazardous material.
I have one question.
Yeah, sure.
It's about the plate glass windows.
Yeah.
Are they just not allowed anymore?
They're not allowed anymore. Yeah, they were grandfathered in, it's fireproof, yes. Yep. Typically, your corridor is considered a room. And that room needs to stay stable as long as possible. Hypothetically, there was a fire in the building. Everyone's discharging into the corridor and you got to get out of the building. The fire code upgrades that they've done in your state is phenomenal. There hasn't been a school fire since, I forget, it's a long time ago. And, you know, so they work. And this is, you know, the school that we built in the 50s and 60s and 70s, it's a, it's a slow movement to upgrade them, but as soon as we touch them, we got to make sure it's broken. So.
Any other questions, Chris, or not? Jen?
I know this is just a presentation. Is there a more detailed report that talks, that like splits out the rolling basis from the?
A hundred percent. Yeah. Yeah. So what I'm going to share with Ms. Phyllis and Dr. Evans and Mr. Lewis, the facilities director, would be the final VCS reports that were submitted to the state. The finals, I need, I need some, you know, help from the district to log into the portal and get me those finals. I thought I would be able to do it. I can't. But anyway, we'll figure that out and we could distribute that to the board. They also get up on the state's website. You could, you could pull down the building condition survey of any given district in your state.
So to clarify the rolling basis items, is that something that, like, the school maintenance staff would be slowly taking care of?
Yeah, they already do that.
Right. So I mean, they were just talking about replacing ceiling tiles in, I think, Rutherford.
Right.
Right. So I guess I was assuming that that was something that was just on their docket that was fully happening.
Right. But when you have a building that's as large as this middle school or the high school, you might want to consider a capital project or capital improvement to get a little economy of scale.
Yeah.
If you are replacing, I have a, I'm working in a neighboring district. It was an old building. It was 1920 building. We replaced like 150 doors. We got a pretty good deal on them because of how many we were buying. But doors are not only a safety concern, it's getting in and out of spaces and then out of the building. So facilities directors, and I know Steve Lewis, for fact, definitely has a, is honed in on that, making sure that all the hardware works, all the security features of a door are okay. If you do need to replace a door slab or anything that, you know, that he's on it. But again, you know, it's a little unfair to school districts on how much they got to keep up without the money being, you know, so it's, the capital project is definitely a way to get a little bit more done without, you know, eroding too much of your operating budget.
So for your rolling basis, then you're proposing to do a capital project for some of it?
You could. Right. So you could, so for example, like the tennis court project, we had to do work inside the building to get building aid on that tennis court project. So that's a capital project. You know, we could have done something like replace 30 or 40 doors in the high school or the middle school to pair that with that project to benefit from building aid. So, yeah, sometimes it does make sense to do some of those rolling basis pieces in any capital project.
Any other questions for Mr. Ledany?
Thank you, Mr. Ledany?
I have a question on the update.
What update? The capital project?
Yeah. Did we find out what was going on with that smell in their room, 111, 113?
Yeah. So we had testing done, so air samples. We had actually two air sampling tests, did some investigation on the flooring. I know that Mr. Lewis was going to double-check with some of the staff. But we believe that anytime you put all these new materials into a building, you know, there's some of that kind of like new car smell kind of thing that that does happen. So, but that dissipates. And to make everyone feel, you know, assured that it wasn't harmful, we did all this testing to make sure that the air quality in that room wasn't any different or any worse than any other space in the building. And that proved to be the case. So it was, it was just kind of a, an interesting, annoying smell that is dissipating. And I know that Mr. Lewis is going to double-check on that and get back to us based on our meeting.
We got back the results from the volatile organic compound test, CO tests, and they were?
Negative.
Negative.
We needed somebody to tell us that because there was a bunch of, we needed to be a physicist to understand it all, but they were negative.
Okay. Now, what's wrong with the heat in the, I think it's the 100 wing, somewhere where it's cold?
Yeah. So what happened, we actually put out an information bulletin to add a couple of balancing valves to the existing or to the, to the new system and some of the loops. So between that and balancing the new boilers, it's interesting because a lot of times that you put in these new boilers or these new air handling units or anything that's a major mechanical ventilation upgrade or heating upgrade, there's almost this kind of kicking the tires, balancing and figuring out how it's going to work best in that situation. So, you know, manipulating valves and ramping up pumps and things like that, it's all part of like, let's figure out how this, this thing works best within this scenario. So it's fairly typical to have some of this kind of ironing out of the kinks time period right after you install something that large. So the boilers were done within the energy performance contract, but the heating roof was done within the capital project. So those two projects were moving forward parallel. And also that brings up another challenge of making sure, because another, an engineer for the EPC project and our engineers need to collaborate that one, which is fine, which we have been doing. Again, it's two different entities designing three different things, but trying to come meet in the middle of the yard and battle.
But are they the panel on?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, definitely.
So why are the kids still complaining that they're cold now?
Well, human comfort is a tough thing. Human comfort ranges from 67 degrees to 72 degrees. And I think it's even, it's a five or six degree swing as far as whether you're going to feel comfortable in a room that's 70 degrees or if I'm going to feel comfortable that is 69 degrees or whatever it may be. So that's always an interesting kind of battle that I know that a lot of facilities directors struggle with as far as like, you know, the room's sometimes hot, sometimes cold for people.
Saty hackers.
But the balancing valves haven't been put in yet.
So they haven't been putting the down valve?
No, because it has to drain the system and it's a little bit of a process to do that. So we want to do that during the break.
Yeah. So we're doing, during spring break when there's nobody in the building, because we have to drain the system in order to install the valves.
Okay, so break actually fixed?
Yeah. Yeah. So it was a long-winded answer to tell you.
Is there a boiler up and running?
Yes. Yeah, all boilers up and running. Yes. Yep, they are. Yep. So we got the pumps moving real quicker than normal to compensate for, but. Yep, so we got the pumps moving real quicker than normal to compensate for, but we're going to iron up.
Thank you very much, Chris, appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris. Have a good night.
All right, moving on in the agenda, upcoming events are listed on the agenda. You can see them there. Community events, we, March twenty third, blood drive, April thirteenth, there's a blood drive locally, so please attend those as best you can to help everybody in the community. Questions and comments from the public?
Got one.
Just give me a moment, I just got to read the disclaimer. The Board of Education recognized the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of public comment, the following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note that the first public comment period of forty five minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email, and address, or telephone number on the sign in list indicating the topic of your comments prior to making your comment. State your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. Speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation in his or her comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president or designated. Handouts and/or petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information, reports, and discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. It will be titled Correspondence Outcomes and will be a public document. I'm done.
Gianna DiMaio.
Hi, I'm Gianna. So obviously, I'm a senior at the high school, and I didn't come here thinking I was going to talk, I'm just here for class. So the good thing about this is that I got to see this as a good meeting to come because they were talking about budgeting. And even though like I won't be here to experience the budget or see the effects, it's like still my brother's still in school and I like to hope that I can bring an effect like based on the budget and like so that other students can feel the effects. So regarding like field trips, I use sports as a way to keep myself motivated, to have good grades, have good attendance, because it affects my ability to play sport. I get hold to a level through sports to keep those things up, you know? And I feel like into activities rather than clubs, because even if you're ineligible, you can still go to those trips with those clubs. I think those field trips would keep kids hold on to responsibility, a level where they have to keep their grades up and would have to, to be able to go to it. Like give kids in the school who aren't a part of clubs or sports, someone to keep them motivated to keep their grades up. I feel like there's nothing really other than graduation and the ability to pass class to keep them, that their grades up. That's why we have a poor attendance rate and thirty percent or whatever for ineligibility. And I know that for budgeting regarding sports, that there's like a lot of problems, the kids, you can't, I don't know how to explain it to that kid, I was not expecting to come up. I was just looking for the paper over there. The girls varsity soccer uniforms for at least six years have not been updated. Since I can't say names, I had people that I've known in the senior class who've been playing since at least middle school on the varsity level and have not seen the uniforms be changed. And it's hard to say if one uniform or one sport should get their uniforms updated rather than the other, because middle schools are a part of this budget. But I think that we should look and try to allocate funds for maybe uniforms that have been more outdated. Or maybe not even just outdated, like the, how long they've been there, but their actual, like how they look. Like I know big soccer uniforms are very dirty, they have holes and rips, and they still have to go down to the JV level and they're already kind of falling apart on us. We've been forced to use our blue jersey pants because you can't see the stains as well as the white ones, and I feel like that's something that we should look into. But no, can I say R A D or no?
No.
The person in charge of the budget for the sports?
Good job.
Didn't specify that soccer would be getting updated uniforms, and I feel like because I was on the team and I've seen the uniforms, maybe that's something that should be looked at.
Thank you very much for your comments today.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Gianna was the only person who signed up, but we do have a public comment period at the end of the meeting also, if someone would like to make a comment. When Dr. Evans come back, you will get the superintendent update from our superintendent. Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. Good evening, everyone. And I too want to echo the congratulations that have been going around for our winter athletes, in particular Alexis Hines for her state championship in girls slalom skiing. It's truly wonderful. Ali Amoda for a, I guess, a career accomplishment of hitting a thousand points. And all of our athletes, Tana DeJesus, who will be competing this weekend, and our other teams that unfortunately their seasons that have ended, but they all worked hard this year, so kudos to them. Some different things on my report tonight, and I'll try to keep it brief given the hour. We are wrapping up our school culture and climate surveys. The parent surveys are still presently open. The student surveys, we're trying to get remaining students who haven't taken them yet, hopefully by tomorrow. And then on the March tenth conference day, we'll be surveying our staff. The afternoon teas with the superintendent sessions have been scheduled. They will begin on April thirteenth and run through April twenty eighth, the various schools throughout the district. More information about those is on our website. The New York State Education Department's Blue Ribbon Commission on Graduation Measures is seeking public feedback on revisions to the graduation measures that might be, that are being considered by the State Education Department. The prompt that they're asking the public to provide feedback on is foundational skills like initiative, time management, and collaboration are shown to prepare students for school, college, career, civic engagement, and life, and our priorities of the business world. How can these skills be fostered and encouraged in K-12 education? I provided the board with a link if you wanted to provide feedback on that, and it can also be found on the State Education Department's website. We are hopefully wrapping up our, some administrative searches that weather-related closures have caused delays to, primarily the high school assistant principal position and the assistant superintendent's position. We are also close to hopefully finalizing a new cook manager for the district, and we are also presently searching for principals. We are also entering the spring teacher recruitment season. So we have a number of teacher recruitment fairs that different staff will be attending during the month of March. Some are in person, some are virtual, but we're hoping to start canvassing and recruiting candidates to replace positions that we have available next year. Last but not least, the State Education Department published enrollment data, though the board does get these on a, I think, a monthly basis from our data department. It is worth noting that we had another decline in enrollment last year, about a hundred students. We, we've been losing about four percent of our students every year. Over the past one, two, three, four, five, six years, we've lost eight percent of our total enrollment. And when we dive a little bit deeper into the data, we see that our incoming kindergarten enrollments over that same time period have declined by eight and a half percent. So it's not that it's somehow kind of just falling off and like upper grades, we have fewer students entering our schools in kindergarten. So just something to keep in mind throughout the budget season and when we come back at the next meeting regarding staffing considerations for the upcoming year. And I believe, I've shared also with the board, the last student roundtable discussions, and as Mr. Feltman noted, lovely meeting with the high school group in mid-March.
Any questions from the board?
I have a quick question. So the kindergarten enrollment is down eight percent. What about our pre-k program? Are we at full capacity with both their three-year-olds and four-year-olds?
I don't know if we're at full capacity, but we're probably around, around the numbers that we were running in Project Excel, which is good. We could probably take a few more, but it is starting to fill up. And as we start taking on students from other districts for the CPSE programs, those are seats that are getting occupied as well. So right now, we're at a pretty decent capacity.
Any other questions for Dr. Evans? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. She would like to put on your Lisa hat for a second.
Sure.
The DCMO Fuel Bit Award is in there. Does anybody have any questions regarding it? You're off the hook. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Teresa.
Okay, so you saw on the agenda the MBK fellows, so that comes from a grant, and Mr. Groden already mentioned that we have two students as fellows, and their mentors also receive a stipend throughout the year for being a part of that program. Also, the Orton Gillingham contract is on the agenda for your approval. Orton Gillingham is the intervention program and ELA program that we use, K-5. Right now, K-2 is the focus, and those teachers will be receiving training this summer. Some of them have already had it, but the hope is that they will all be trained by the end of the summer. And then there were some private school contracts also just to bring to your attention. That was because of a change in personnel in those private schools, and that was the reason for those contracts to be, needed to be approved. Any questions?
Mr. Groden.
Teachers that are already trained in OG, are they going to get a refresher so that they're all leveled out and they're all on the same page, literally? Or are they, no, you already got it, so we're just training up the new people?
It's my understanding that it's anybody that has not yet been trained, so that everybody by the end of the summer will have received the initial training, but there will be training that continues every year as a refresher using that program.
In the summer?
I don't know about in the summer, but throughout the school year, there's opportunities for that. Potentially, that would be a different grant year, potentially it could be a summer again.
Thanks.
Mr. Russo.
So by the end of this summer, every teacher from K through fifth grade will be trained?
K-2.
K-2.
K-2, so that's the hope. We can't force summer professional development, but it's being offered, and the hope is that everyone will attend that.
What percentage do we have that's trained already?
I don't know the answer to that. I would say probably more than half, but I don't have the exact percentage. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other question?
Is that, yeah, I do. Is that just the reading specialists?
No.
It's all of them? Okay, great. That'd be terrific. I've heard such good things.
All right, so that brings us to Mrs. Greco.
I'd like to bring forth for discussion action items T-1 through T-12.
Do you have a second on that? By Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Mrs. Greco?
I'd like to put up for approval action items T-1 through T-12.
Mr. Groden has a second. Any discussion? Mrs. Holmes?
Is there anybody can have a little bit more information on the Lexikey agreement?
Surely. Dr. Evans?
So I will, I'll give it a shot, then I will defer to Ms. Carlin if she has the information. This is a translation software that we use to translate materials into Spanish for our Spanish, Spanish-speaking families.
Any language.
Or any language, I hear, yeah, I'm sorry, any language.
Okay.
I asked that same question at the agenda setting, and Mrs. stated that we are using it quite a bit. And we only pay for when we use it. We don't pay fifty K and then pay on top of, we only pay for what we use.
Okay, that's fine.
Correct?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Very well. All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, everybody. So moving on to correspondence. They are listed on the agenda. If anyone would like to take a look, please do. Questions and comments from the public? Reggie, is there anything on the page? Oh, that was just Gianna. Yeah, so we're good on that. Thank you very much, Reggie, I appreciate it. And everybody's favorite, do I have a motion to adjourn made by Mrs. Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Holmes? Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Any board member can sign your papers if you're here for government class.
Anybody else got paper, paper, paper? Let's go, we can sign, get you out of here. Nice nails. Time meeting, time of death, nine twenty-six. She's pregnant and running me, that's Tim calling.
Hey!
So worried I'm not going to.